Good evening. Our Staff Member of the Month for Claridan is Brianna Melendez. That's right. And I don't think I can properly honor Brianna without also tying in some Taylor Swift. A quote I have always loved by Ms. Swift is this, "I don't think you should ever have to apologize for your excitement. Just because something's cliche doesn't mean it's not awesome. The worst kind of person is someone who makes someone feel bad, dumb, or stupid for being excited about something." Well, I think Taylor and Brianna would be the best of friends because Brianna is the best kind of person and the best kind of teacher. She is someone who never makes others feel that they can't be completely themselves and revel in whatever they find awesome in life. She is always excited to help out, to cheer on a colleague, to help me seem more techie than I am. If there is a dance to chaperone, Ms. Melendez is not just there, she is there in dancing. If she is teaching coding or filming a broadcast, she is doing it in the most dynamic and relatable way possible. And if she is lip syncing in an anti-bullying video, she will not be doing so during one song. She will be in several numbers, especially if it involves Taylor. And the work ethic, kindness, excitement, and positivity that radiates from Bree is exactly what I want our students at Claridan to aspire to. The Melendez family has always had a special place in my heart. You remind me of simpler times and some of my fondest memories from teaching. Brianna, I feel very lucky and proud to have known you then, and even luckier that I have you on my team now. Congratulations. Tell Felix's absence is noted. So I'm in a quote kind of mood this evening, it seems. Author Amy Lee McCray once wrote, "Kindness can transform someone's dark moment with a blaze of light. You'll never know how much your caring matters. Make a difference for another today." Our Student of the Month is Amy Chawetty, and I don't think a day goes by at Claridan School where Amy doesn't make a difference by doing something kind for another person. When I told Amy that she had been chosen, I offered her some Jolly Ranchers along with my congratulations. When I told her she could take two pieces, she did, but not for herself. One was for her sister. Today, we had an author visit, and she signed books for our students. Without being asked to, Amy made a thank you card for Mrs. Paulson, and in talking to the author afterwards, she expressed how touched she was by the gesture and how she would treasure it. And even though it's Teacher Appreciation Week, Amy went out of her way to brighten my day by writing me a principal appreciation note decorated in my favorite color, purple. Mrs. Valente and I were just chatting at the end of the day about what a wonderful young lady Amy is, and she told me about the special wish and birthday card Amy brought to her during lunch duty earlier in the year. Amy, I hope you never stop transforming everyday moments for others with your compassion and kindness. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. The Secaucus High School Teacher of the Month is our Physical Education Teacher, Mr. Mejia. In addition to having a full schedule, he is a three-season coach, which includes soccer, baseball, and track. And on top of his demanding coaching responsibilities, he took on the commitment of being the senior class co-advisor, which includes organizing fundraisers, overseeing Spirit Week, planning trips, orchestrating two memorable proms. This year, it's at the Venetian on June 6th, and our upcoming graduation. These are just to name a few of the responsibilities of class advisor. He willingly invests countless hours on his personal time to ensure that our students have the best possible school experience. And despite his demanding schedule, Mr. Mejia never wavers in his support for our students. His tireless efforts are a testament to his character and dedication. And we are extremely fortunate to have teachers like Mr. Mejia who get involved in all the extra responsibilities, which really calculates into a double shift of work. Mr. Mejia many times enters a building at seven o'clock in the morning, and then he doesn't get home till sometimes after seven o'clock in the evening. Tonight's one of those nights. You were coaching, taught all day, and then you coached baseball, and you're gonna go home after this. Mr. Mejia really appreciate everything you do for our school community. Thank you so much. And the Secaucus High School Student of the Month is Vatil DeWiddey. Vatil is also, we can clap for this one, Vatil is also the Class of 2024 Balladitorian. Salutatorium. It is, what is it, a tenth of a point? I think a tenth of a point. He has an incredible GPA of 4.808. Vatil is a member of our STEM Academy. He has been inducted into all of our Honor Societies, National Honor Society, American Technology Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, National English Honor Society, and the National Science Honor Society. He continued to challenge himself this year, it's his senior year. He took classes such as AP Statistics, Calculus III, AP Macroeconomics, and Waves in Modern Physics. He's been awarded first place in the KISS Institute of Practical Robotics April in 2021, and May of 2021, and May of 2022. He's a member of our high school's robotics club as the coding officer, where he helped his team win several awards. He's a member of our band. He is a member of our JSA. In that club, he's the Director of Technology, and he competes in tennis and cross country. Vatil will be attending Georgia Institute of Technology in the fall. Vatil is one of the most genuine, humble, and nicest individuals that you will ever meet. And good things happen to good people, and Vatil happens to be one of the great ones. And I can't wait to see what the future holds for you, Vatil. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all the honorees. Next up, Paige.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been well. Last week, our seniors had their first field trip of their upcoming senior events, and it was a cruise around the Hudson River to see the Statue of Liberty. And they all had a very fun time, dancing and eating and just enjoying time with the friends that they have. This weekend, our track team is having the North Hudson meet this Saturday at 4:00 PM right here at the high school. Along with next weekend, they have their Hudson County meet next Friday and Saturday, also here at the high school. It'd be nice for you to go support the hard-working student athletes in their events and as they compete in these great meets. Next Thursday is the high school chorus concert, no, I'm sorry, next Tuesday is the high school chorus concert, and next Thursday is also the high school band concert. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. I'll wait for you to come back. Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Acting Superintendent Report?
The last time I spoke, I talked about basically making a baseball. And Ms. Kniff told me she had to start studying sports to understand me. It was pretty funny. But I made a promise when I took this acting role to visit every school and try to meet as many people as I could. And this is the week we appreciate teachers, right? You know, it's funny because I hear this word data a lot in education, and a lot of people don't know it really exists. And something I learned through gathering the data is that if you are a homegrown kid and you start in our system and you work your way through it, there is a really good chance that you can do some really amazing things. And I have to tell you, I have a couple signs on my office, you know, my real office, the real job I have. And sign one says, "Get better," right? I'll leave a couple of the other ones out. But the last sign says, "The most dangerous people in the world are the ones that don't know that they don't know." So a lot of parents, when you drop your children off to school, truth is, you really don't know. You only go by what your child tells you. But your teachers are in that room, and the aides, and they're doing the best they can. I saw that. I saw it. I saw clean schools, custodians. You know, there was one thing that like made me a little mad is I saw one of our school buses doesn't have Secaucus on it. It made me mad. We need people to drive our buses. I'm not gonna lie about that. I did, that made me mad. It did. We're Secaucus, man. We don't need another bus. We need our buses. So we need help. Your kids are in good hands. The school district, don't matter who's sitting in my seat, there's really good people working here, taking care of them. I learned that. And over the next few weeks, I hope to do it again. And I wrote something to the teachers today. Well, actually, I got a couple of secretaries now, Carol Ann, Veronica, Anne Marie. I do a lot of things different, so I write letters while I'm driving. I think better, I think. So I kinda wrote, but I did say this, "When I enter your buildings, I'm entering as a friend and a colleague." That's the truth. Because that's what I am here. So that's my report.
Madam President, I need to introduce two resolutions for the Board to act on with regard to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The resolution is to approve the Acting Superintendent's decision affirming the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings in two separate appeals, 263, 263, HSS 0326, 2024, Number 1, and Number 2, both following appeals before the Board in closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings as reported by the Acting Superintendent and are available at the administrative offices for review.
Second. Call the roll. Discussion?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Business Administrator Board Secretary Report?
No report at this time.
Thank you, Grace. Public Forum? No? Okay. Governance. Personnel.
Under Personnel, we discuss the appointments for teachers, teacher assistants, secretaries, custodial staff, and others for the 2024-25 school year. Approve summer math and English academy teachers, and also appointing our fall and winter co-curricular professionals. I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation of the Acting Superintendent to approve and adopt the resolutions R 1.01 through R 1.24, and motion M 1.01 as...
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes, I have to recuse myself from R 1.03 and R 1.12. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Bolonino?
No on R 1.06, yes on everything else.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes to all but R 1.03, which I'll be refusing myself from.
Policy?
Numerous policies were modified and updated. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Acting Superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 2.01 through R 2.02.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Education curriculum?
Okay. We discussed and approved several field trips. We made moderate changes to the Emergency Virtual Remote Instruction Plan that will be available on the district website. We discussed potential changes to standards-based report cards at the elementary level. If approved, updates will be available in June. College acceptance information. Christina Wisswasser will provide a section in her counselor newsletter to reflect where our students have been accepted. This information is also available at our eighth-grade open house. Kindergarten screening is to take place, I believe at Claridan. I think it's at Claridan. For students that are not currently enrolled in our district preschool program, more information to follow. And then summer curriculum writing and June professional development. Discussed K through 5 math and ELA standards that have been updated, and discussed the possibility of expanding Amplify programs to more grade levels. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Acting Superintendent to approve and adopt resolution R 3.01 through R 3.02 as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Special Services? No report. Operations. Finance?
I'm gonna start with finance this month. Under Finance, we discuss waiving the fee for the Maria Nolan volleyball camp that is held at the high school during the summer months, renewal of the food service contract, an amendment to our title fund grants, and ARP homeless grants, and the approval of the fee schedule for the 2024-2025 school year Chromebooks. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolution R 5.01 to R 5.10.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
On resolution R 5.01, approval of the check register, I recuse myself on the payment to Reed Academy and vote yes to all other resolutions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes. Under Safety, Security, Buildings, and Grounds, for the district-wide discussion, we discussed an update on our school due work order system. We discussed the job description for full-time security guards. We also discussed the Secaucus summer camp using our buildings over the summer months and what space they're gonna be occupying. Under Huber Street in Millridge, we revisited the summer capital projects and were updated in regards to potential projects that will occur. One project will be the faculty bathrooms on the upper floors, and there will also be a discussion regarding a proposal to redo the awning on the main entrance. Under Claridan School, the summer projects would consist of fixing the wall in the D-Pod area. Middle school and high school, the summer projects are the PAC Center lighting and sound systems will be upgraded. We also reviewed and discussed the increase in the rental of the district facilities, which should be finalized hopefully by our next board meeting. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary to approve and accept resolution R 6.01 and M 6.01.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Under Ad-Hoc Committees, we have a report this month just for preschool.
The pre-K committee met on Friday, May 3rd. We got an update from our Acting Superintendent. Some administrators went to another school district that are using the state aid for their pre-K program. The administrators gave us a report which included some of the challenges the district faced. There were also some questions on the space requirements, if it's 750 or 950 square feet. If it is 750, there may be some issues. The Acting Superintendent then presented some options the committee would need to consider, including the pros and cons of each option. There are also some questions on how much of a disruption adding additional rooms would cause to the rest of the district.
Thank you. Public Forum, General? Yes. Mahesh Napa?
Hi, I'm Mahesh Napa. Sir, before you begin, may I just read this statement? Will you indulge me, please? Thank you. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Secaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The Board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the Board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the Board discardes comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they can be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the Board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Thank you for your indulgence, sir, and you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. I did go through that as part of the agenda, but it's just...
It's all for you.
But I wanna make sure I follow the protocol, so let me know if I'm not, and happy to correct that. So my name is Mahesh Napa. My address is 171 Sandcastle Key, and my child, she's in first grade. Do I have to say the name of my child? All right, okay. So she goes to Claridan, and she's doing well. Very happy for her to start at kindergarten. I have my second one who's coming in September joining in kindergarten, so excited for that. So my question, more likely an observation, is each child has a different way of learning, and each teacher should be able to provide an environment where each child can grow their skills. I know it's kinda really early, but it's best to catch the kids early and try to understand like where their best skills line up, where they need more help with, right? And my specific question was around the Gifted and Talented Program. I would really like to understand like who are the contacts whom I should go and understand like what the program is about. The SBUE website has a PDF, which I went through, kinda describes the program at a very high level, but I feel like there is very less transparency in general about the program. And I ask like other parents, and I've spoken to the teacher in the past, in the previous grade, like about the program, and she did observe like we make observations and we create, and then we pass it to a council or a program, and they make those decisions, and the students are going to different classes. So it's kinda like an open question, like how does the Gifted and Talented Program run between K to third grade?
So anytime you have a question in your building, go to your principal. I wouldn't say that often and all the time. One thing I will tell you is our elementary schools also have someone that is assigned as an elementary supervisor of elementary. So we just spoke about data. There's so much data-driven evidence of what we need and what we have to work on. Amplify seems to be a huge program that we're really using, and it's moving forward for us. But I would say that each building, anytime you have a question, just ask your principal.
Can I jump in and just say I think it would be best, on the tails of what Mr. Voorhees has said, to email Ms. Candela, and I'm sure she would be happy to explain to you exactly the requirements for Gifted and Talented, how they meet, what the content is. That would be the best thing for you to do.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. If I may, can I have another question? All right. So my second question is about parents' responsibility and participation in the working of the school, right? And I have not observed other schools, and you're all educators, and you might have, you have much more experience in the field of education. The Parents/Teacher Body, which I have seen, again, my child is at a very early age, but I do not see them involved in any kind of academics or sports for helping out the kids, at least in elementary. It's mostly about having the kids have a lot of fun, which is great to a certain point, but I feel like this is just only focuses about like how can they have better birthday parties, how can they have these T-shirts, and so on and so forth. Is that the expectations we should have from a Parents/Teacher Body across other schools and towns? Is that the same? And I'm gonna ask it in a way where like how can the parents participate more and volunteer their time if they can to help in the child's education and well-being and everything, so?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're asking. Could you ask that again?
So I believe, sir, that you're asking the question, how can parents become more engaged in terms of their children's education in their schools?
In the schools, is that it?
So that too would be something certainly that Ms. Candela would be able to assist you with, tell you what opportunities there are for parents to become involved, you know, whether through the school or rather through the PTA, PTO?
Yes.
Through the PTA. And there are many activities in which parents can engage, but I think that she will give you advice and probably put you in touch with the president of that local association, who would be an excellent source of information for you.
And one other...
And one other thing to add, too. I know you also mentioned like sports and extracurricular activities. The rec department in this town is very, very involved, super active, so I think even if you reach out to a contact at the rec department. And so all of us that sit on this board, we come from all different professional walks of life, and we do this for volunteers, so it's so hard to answer this question specifically about Gifted and Talented, because we're not as involved in the day-to-day operations. It's more like overview and just making sure that the community is represented up here and has a voice. So the principal is an excellent point of contact, and then for any type of like extracurricular, the rec department or even local clubs or organizations, Boy Scouts, different dance studios, and I think the rec department or even, there's some parent Facebook pages that you could join and just ask for leads on things to have those extra opportunities too, which is really important.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Leah. Very well said.
And for the Teachers Appreciation Week, thank you so much for everything you do for us. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Comments?
I have a comment. During the Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to thank the incredible teachers of our district. Thank you today and every day for teaching, nurturing, caring, and being consistent for all of our children in our district every single day. It does not go unnoticed.
I'd like to second that, and I'd also like to wish a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.
Anyone else?
What they said.
Yes. Yeah. What they said. Ditto. I say ditto, too. I was also going to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Day, a week, to all of our amazing teachers and staff. Happy Mother's Day to everyone here and everyone in the community. And also, a big thank you to Mr. Voorhees. Charlie, your breath of fresh air. Thank you so much for all that you are doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait till June for thank you. Long way to go.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.